Good evening and welcome, everybody, to the January 10th Board of Education meeting. Can you please rise and have a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin this evening with the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our January 10th Board of Education meeting. I hope everyone had a good holiday season, a winter break, and is settling back into the rhythm of school and work. Schools and offices are closed this coming Monday, January 16th, for Martin Luther King Junior Day, but after that, we have a good, long uninterrupted stretch of school until our midwinter recess from February 20th to 24th. And if you look at the long range weather forecast, it does not look like there are any snow days on the horizon either. And I know lots of good learning and teaching will be taking place during that time. I'd like to give you a brief update on our partnership with the Haskins Global Literacy Hub. As you know, as part of our work with Haskins, we have been implementing database individualization, or DBI, as we call it, with our Academic Intervention Services team for the past two years, and it's yielded very positive results. DBI is a methodology that uses frequent progress monitoring to determine next steps for students and has proven to be very effective with students with language-based learning disabilities such as dyslexia. Now, our elementary school special education teachers are working with Dr. Kearns from Haskins on implementing DBI, and we are now seeing the same positive impact with our special education students. Dr. Kearns has been with us this week and will be back to work with our teachers again in March. And the partnership with Haskins has really provided a tremendous support to our students and our staff who are delivering these great interventions, and we're very thankful for that. And this evening, we'll be sharing information about the program, the Academy at Rye High School. I'm pleased that we have two students that will be a part of tonight's presentation, and we'll share details about their work at the Academy. And I understand that the deadline for applications to the Academy is this coming Friday, so the timing is terrific for folks that are looking to learn more about the Academy. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, so we will roll right to our presentation and discussion on the Academy at Rye High School.
Excellent. So I'm really thrilled that we've done this presentation, not the same presentation, but a presentation about the Academy for the last few years. And it really is an incredible way to watch a program grow and to watch an idea that came about a number of years back and see how it has progressed and grown over time. The Academy is our alternative high school program, and it replaced the Rye School of Leadership that had been located at 324 Midland. And, you know, we had gone out to the community and asked what was missing. And we heard that there were students that felt like there was only one academic pathway at Rye High School. And now we have multiples, but this, the Academy, is the pathway that's furthest along in its development. And we're really excited to get this progress report, basically, of where things are. And we're really excited about the role the Academy can play for a professional development learning lab for the entire district in thinking about ways to have more student-centered teaching and learning. So, without further ado, I'll turn it to my esteemed colleagues, Suzanne Short, Caitlin Sasson, and Bill Meyer.
Hi, everybody. We were just discussing the Friday, the 13th, as a due date, perhaps being a point of revision for next year, although it won't be the same day again next year, anyway. But we were laughing about that. Not it, you guys. So, obviously, as we look through the ideas that we are discussing, the primary catalyst behind all of it is going to be founded in the idea of the Rye Commitment. This has driven our work since Dr. Byrne got here. And despite the fact that we don't always realize it, it is a part of our building, our discussion, and our planning every single day. And this program's kind of one of the places that you can see that at the forefront the most. And my expectation, as we kind of go through this, is some of the thinking and learning that we've acquired through the implementation of this particular program, you'll start to see it flourish more and more in the high school as more and more of these facets become an everyday reality in our building. So, I would say that we've come a long way. We've kind of been on this road together, Caitlin and I, more than anybody else together. But when we first started, we started a program, and we knew why we were doing it, but I don't know that we were clearly articulating our purpose and how we were doing it. So, much of last year, I would say, we spent some time working with the faculty and the staff and the students on coming up with an academy mission statement. And this is where we landed. I'm going to read it to you and then explain to you why. "Academy students and teachers authentically learn, reflect, and grow by co-creating an innovative program that fosters a culture of caring and engages us with our wider community." There are a lot of words in there that come straight out of the Rye Commitment. The irony of it is that we didn't use the Rye Commitment as we came up with it. And so, it genuinely is a program that does exactly what we're setting out to do as a district. When we actually got down to the work of designing the courses and the programs, I would say that there's a few things that we really wanted to focus on. We wanted, as it says, an authen-- we're going to go back. That's all good. We wanted an authentic experience for students above and beyond what they were able to experience, things that could happen outside of a classroom and not just in a space that they'll never see and use again. Authentic learning is not regurgitating a test. It's seeing if you can actually apply the knowledge you've acquired, and that was what we wanted to create for our students as a starting point. We also wanted to work with furthering the connections in the community. We have an amazing place that we work and live in, and it gave us a chance to start to kind of meld some of those connections more, to understand where we are and get students to understand where they live. And then, probably more than anything else, we wanted to push instructional opportunities for our students, for spaces, and the way that we use the classrooms that we have that have been set up like 1908, for as long as we have been here, and to think about ways of pushing our instruction. The hope, and what we're starting to see come to fruition, is that that program starts to become a model for things that happen in the rest of the building. So, the third floor, you've been up there, looks amazing. The practices that the teachers are using in the morning in the Academy are being observed and shared and serving as a template for, through the staff developers, a program that we're starting to build out, both building and district-wide, for the use of space. So, we're starting to see those trends catch on in our building. We're starting to see teachers go into those classes to observe the way that things are happening. And the plan is that that continues to be a model for instructional design, with the ultimate goal being that we have multiple pathways, but that the primary focus is creating a bunch of pathways in which people are really reflecting on what they're doing and continuously redefining and changing what they're doing instead of letting it get kind of set into 1908-style formats. Obviously, you're going to hear from the two people next to me, none of this would happen over the course of the last year. Bill and Caitlin have really taken the reins on the program. I'm fortunate to be able to be somebody who supports them, but they deserve all the credit, as well as the faculty and staff who work up there and the amazing students. So, I'm going to turn it over to them, and I'll be back for questions.
Thanks, Suzanne. It's so exciting to be back here. I think it was a little over a year ago when I got to talk a little bit about the Academy and the work that we were doing. And it's not only an incredible program, but I have to say it's probably one of the most amazing projects I've been a part of in terms of my own professional career. And I think that speaks to both what's evolved over the last 12 months, but also what's ahead of us over the next 12-plus months. And so, tonight, what we want to highlight is what makes the Academy so incredible, and particularly, two aspects of it. And I think if we think about education and some of the challenges that we face within our classrooms, and traditional education is how siloed and disjointed and often disconnected classes, courses, disciplines are from the realities of the 21st century and the world we live in and the world that students live in. And I think if one piece sort of speaks to the focus of tonight, and you're going to hear this more than anything from the students who are going to be presenting, is this idea of integration, this idea of bringing together multiple disciplines, this idea of bringing together passion and purpose and research within their courses and this community-based action research course, this idea of taking those conversations about SEL and wellness that I know that you have had over the course of the fall and bringing that into the center of the curriculum and the lives of the students. And most of all, it's about the professional learning and taking risks and chances. And I would say, more than in any place that I've ever been, watching students take the lead in the direction of what unfolds within the classroom. And I think, as you will discover and we witness every day, I mean, it really speaks to the students more than anything and what they bring to the table and where they can take us and push us professionally. And hopefully, that is one of the big ripple effects across the whole school and something I think that will be highlighted tonight.
So, as Bill said, one of the best opportunities with the Academy has been the space. And so, it's amazing to see at 8:00 in the morning when the students walk up there, just like this deep breath, this sense of calmness they have walking into space. It's almost like walking into a job that they absolutely love because it's not a traditional classroom. It's not a dark place. It's very bright. It's very airy. And they're like, what are we going to learn and design and create today? It's like this, like, unknown. So, it's awesome to see them, like, come up in the morning, like, ready to go. We started the Academy several years ago in a very different space from upstairs, as you all know. And so, just coincide, building the program and building the space together has been one of the best experiences while COVID, you know, had horrible, you know, limitations with how fast we could get the space up and running and the area of, you know, what it would look like and the delay with things. Building this together and, like, kind of phasing it into the program has really actually been an amazing process for us to go through. So, we officially had our students come up in September. We launched a retreat with our students in August, and the running kind of conversation and joke was, are we actually going to be there in September? Because we kept promising it, and we said, absolutely, we are going to be up there. And so, this space, unlike any other classroom that I've been, changes every second of every day when you're up there. Students tailor it to what their needs are. Teachers tailor it to what their needs are. They have opportunities for movement. I mean, think of a traditional classroom when there's 30 kids in a room with desks and you can't move anywhere. Just the ability to get up and go somewhere else, to go to a place where they can work in a small group, to have a mini lesson by a teacher, to be able to look, work in like a station-rotation model, to take any piece of furniture that speaks to you during that 55 minutes of learning has just made such an incredible difference for our faculty, our students, and our staff, and even for us. We go up there, and you'll always find Ms. Short in one of those nooks with a pillow with students, and that's because that's where she likes to learn. I prefer the high seats, being small. You like to be up high to see everything. So, it really is just so adaptable to everyone's learning and the conducive-ness and the technology that is now available up there for our students to be able to share, to co-create, collaborate, has just been huge for the courses that we are pushing forward in that space. You'll see on our next slide, just some simple configurations. And I said, because that space isn't done just yet, but with the furniture that we have upstairs, we are able to just participate in so many different modalities of learning. So, you will go up there, and you may see stations happening for that day. You may see whole-group instruction. You may see small group. You may see, in the top right corner, with the tables flipped up, like, there's awesome opportunities for formative assessments and quick check-ins, easier than we've ever been able to do before because we have the furniture and the learning and the inquiry all around kind of bundled together. We have now found, like, all the puzzle pieces are there that we need to make this space really successful. Our students will easily collaborate in the middle picture. They're always in group work, and you'll hear that tonight. Whether they're working on the same research topic or question, just to get peer feedback from another student or from a teacher, to just listen in to see what other conversations are happening upstairs, has been really powerful for their own learning and what they're thinking and designing for themselves. So, they're just constantly acquiring and learning from one another.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's, to echo Dr. Meyer, it's actually really incredible to be up here a year later, kind of talking about this action research course yet again, after having lived through its, like, inaugural year, processing, reflecting, and getting to continue to, like, grow it with Ms. Mitchell. So, my name is Ashley Blanch. I'm the math component of the STEM 12th grade action research course. And just an overview, the premise of this course is really to give students the opportunity to hone in on their passions, to explore them as part of a year-long research process. So, in thinking about our first year, Ms. Mitchell and I really wanted to identify and were able to identify some structural changes that we could make to the course that would really enhance our students' depth of research that they would be conducting throughout the year, that would, in turn, allow them to develop essential research skills that they are certain to be using in college and beyond. So, being that this research process is meant to be a year-long endeavor, it is incredibly important that our students are working in a topic of study that they are truly passionate about and that they're invested in in order to sustain them throughout that lengthy time period. It's not often that students are giving that much time to really delve into something that they care about, and we get to provide that for them. But they're not going to, they're not going to apply themselves as much if it's not something that they truly care about. So, we wanted to make sure that we took time at the beginning of the school year, taking many class periods, to work with them on identifying what their passions were. And after that process, they were able to gradually narrow down their list of passions into one broad topic. Some of those topics that they've come up with for their research this year have included harmful chemicals that are frequently used in the cosmetics industry, the impact streaming services have had on the movie industry, the hidden environmental costs of the retail industry, and that is only the tip of the iceberg, and you'll hear more details in a few minutes. So, once they identified those broad topics, they came up with quality, thorough research questions. And that led them into their exploratory research process, where they've spent the last four to six weeks or so learning how to and actually being able to identify quality, peer-reviewed sources, and were given a structure to support them in synthesizing such dense information and being able to make it digestible for themselves and for others that are reading it, that'll lead them into a literature review going forward. So, that's kind of where we are. They've just gone through that process of looking at sources, whether they are scholarly articles, documentaries, podcasts. We allow them the opportunity to dive into numerous types of sources so they could find ones that spoke to them. But we all talked about identifying quality sources. So, they're at the point, at this point, that they're going to begin writing that literature review. They're taking all of that information, and they're putting it together. Now, I think if this was a traditional research course, that would be the end. They would write this thorough, well-written paper, hand it into Ms. Mitchell and myself. We would read it, talk about it with them. They would move on. But this is part of the Academy. So, what really is unique, and honestly, the most valuable part about this course is that it doesn't end with just a paper that they put on her desk. This course allows them the research, the resource, and the time to dive into and do, bring their research to the next level. So, they end their literature review with an either action question, action statement, something that is going to identify some sort of case study that they can bring into our community. It's really important that they have-- one of the things that we noticed, that we identified going from last year to this year, is the action part didn't have as much time as I think the students wanted and that it needed. So, we've allowed that, we've restructured it in a way so that this year, they're going to have more time to really get themselves out into the community with their topics, so they can educate, advocate, and/or act upon the depth of knowledge that they've gone through over the last six to eight weeks. So, because this is such a key part of the process, keep an eye out. They'll be coming. They're incredible. So, we just wanted to make sure that they truly got to engage in the action part of their research and not just the exploratory part. So, I can hardly, I can't wait to see what these incredible students do with their research in the coming months. So, without further ado, we invited two of our students, Henry Field and Lilly O'Connor, to speak about their experience in the action research course this year.
Hi, everybody. I'm Henry Field. It's good to be back to present about my oysters again. I think last time I was here, we had just put the cage in the water, and we were getting ready to launch the club, and now the club is in full effect. Thank you, Mrs. Short. We have a meeting on Thursday, and I have decided to continue my oyster research into my action research class this year as my project. And my initial plan for my action research project was to build an oyster reef, but after some research, I discovered that the permitting process would be too long for a year-long project. So, I pivoted a little bit. In humanities, we did, it's the other class in senior year, we did a sort of self-reflection, and we had a Venn diagram where the one circle was needs in the world that we care about. So, something that the world needs that matters to us. One circle was things that we're skilled at, and one circle was things we love, that we're passionate about. And in the middle of my circle was oysters and music. So, I came to Dr. Meyer, and I was like, what do I do? My purpose in the world is oysters and music. And so, he was like, just do that then. So, he sent me a video of a Japanese experiment on how music affects water molecules. And I was surprised that it only had 800 views because it was like revolutionizing research. And so, it sort of gave me the inspiration to do a project on the effect of music on oysters. And so, naturally, if you don't remember from last time, oysters are filter feeders. So, an oyster is a bivalve molecule. It looks like this. And what happens is, the water streams through in between the two oyster shells, and the oyster shells consume bacteria from the water and use it to grow. So, they naturally filter water like that. And when they hear boat sounds, especially large vessels, they close their shells like this, and they stop filtering. So, the two frequency ranges that oysters are most sensitive to are 10 to 20 Hz and 90 to 100 Hz. So, naturally, as a music-- I have a background in music production and engineering. I thought of filtering a different way. So, instead of filtering water, what I do, part of my music production is filtering sound frequencies that interfere with each other. So, I looked for experiments in filtering sound frequencies, and I stumbled upon, after a lot of research with Ms. Mitchell and Ms. Blanch, an experiment done in India in May of 2022 that was basically analyzing how to use a multi-stage adaptive noise cancellation system to cancel out sine waves that are emitted from boats so whales could communicate without the interference. So, what the adaptive noise cancellation system does is it has an algorithm that takes in the sine wave from the frequency of the boat, and it cancels it out. So, a sine wave looks like this, right? And the sine wave that it uses to cancel is the same wave, but it's out of phase 180 degrees. It's called like wave conjugate. So, the sine wave that starts like this, and then the second wave starts like this. So, where the peak of the first wave is, is where the trough of the second wave is, and that, the two sine waves will balance out like that, and the noise will cancel. So, I thought it was a great experiment to find, especially something so recent. And I've applied it to oyster reefs and extended pass whale communication. And I'm excited to experiment with the adaptive noise cancellation system for my action research project later this year. Thank you for having me.
Hi, I'm Lilly. First of all, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to share a bit about my project this year in action research. It's been super fun so far. So, when we began the process of picking a topic to focus on, I knew I wanted to do something in either animal welfare or sustainability because these are two issues that I've always been really passionate about. And after exploring a few different options, I decided to go with animal testing because it encompasses animal welfare and sustainability. And what also prompted me to choose this was that a few months ago, I found out that CeraVe, a household brand that I'd been using for years, actually uses animal testing. And I was really surprised by that because I love skincare products, and I always try and buy ethically, sustainably, and cruelty-free, and it was just really disappointing. So, it has made me start to research the background of every company that I buy from before, like, supporting a brand that could potentially be using animal cruelty. And that experience made me wonder why animal testing is still used and what alternatives are out there. So, for the past three months, I've been researching animal testing and the alternatives for it by reading and reviewing scholarly articles, documentaries, and also engaging experts in the field. And animal testing has changed a lot in the past 20 years. So, now there's more in vitro testing and computer modeling, for example. And that's why I've cut my sources in the past 20 years. And my most valuable source was the interview I did with my aunt. I didn't really know much about what her job was, but I always knew it had to do with animal testing. Kind of made me dislike her when I was younger, but I knew I had to reach out to her if I was going to be doing a project on this. So, I was really surprised when I learned that she works for Regeneron, which you all probably know is one of our world's leading biotechnology pharmaceutical companies. And she actually has a really important role of making sure that a substance, drug, or treatment can be safe for humans by testing it on a genetically-modified or, in her terms, a genetically-humanized mouse liver. So, that was really surprising. And she also, through this interview, I discovered that there's a big difference between animal testing and cosmetics and animal testing for medical research. And she explained how for cosmetic testing, it's pretty much unnecessary and often produces inaccurate results, whereas for medical purposes, it's needed as a final step after using alternatives to just completely verify that something is safe for humans. I also discovered that animal testing produces more waste, takes more time, and is more expensive than the alternatives, which is why it should only be used for life-saving research like my aunt in the oncology department. She also explained how Regeneron is AALAC accredited, which means they follow strict humane guidelines. And she said that New York has some of the strictest animal testing laws in the country and in the world. But although this comforted me, because I live in New York, it raises the question, why aren't all states banning-- why aren't all states having strict guidelines and why aren't all companies AALAC accredited? So, fortunately, New York banned cosmetic animal testing three weeks ago. That was my initial plan for my action of this project, was to get that banned, but they were ahead of the game. So, my new action is just going to be researching what our federal government can do to reduce animal testing as well as make it more humane. And I think there should be a federal tax break for companies that use alternatives because there's a huge reduced environmental impact, which is kind of an unknown benefit of using an alternative. It's not just the ethical part. The other part of my action for this project is going to be using social, some sort of social media platform to educate consumers on how they can buy cruelty-free products. Because a lot of the times, labels and marketing tactics can be really deceiving. And most people would rather use cruelty-free products. So it's important for people to know how to use the online databases that you have to go check on to make sure that something is cruelty-free. And yeah, so throughout this project, my academy teachers have not only taught me how to create research questions, conduct an interview, and find credible sources, but also have encouraged me to become an activist. And I think that this has been one of the most fulfilling projects I've worked on. And I've also done the highest level of research that I've ever done in my high school career in this class because I was able to choose a topic that I feel motivated to work on every day. And I also get to focus on it for the whole year. So yes, I'm very excited to potentially reduce animal cruelty in our country. Hopefully, by the end of the year, I've accomplished something. And thank you for listening.
So I just want to say Lilly is back on good terms with her aunt. And we're all about family and community building, which transitions to this next slide nicely. So as you can see, I mean, the depth of research is amazing, but also the community of scholars that the students have created. And that didn't just happen. And I think one of the other big pieces we wanted to share besides the space and this incredible research course is also the ways in which the academy has evolved in the building of community. So Caitlin referenced this, but this actually began over the summer. We were very fortunate to be at the Wainwright House to both work with teachers, but also welcome the new cohort of students as well as the current seniors. And what we ended up doing with a lot of intentionality is taking those concepts of wellness and gratitude and service that were often mentioned earlier in this SEL work and actually build that into the experience of students throughout the course of each month with a theme and then each week with an in-depth focus. And one of the very powerful things about this space is it's not just the role of the advisory in allowing us to bring in these modules, but also the outside speakers, experts in the field, run meditations, breathwork workshops. And most recently, we took two separate trips to Bread of Life with the students to engage in service, which was very powerful for both them and I think also the organization. And currently, the students are engaging in their own service learning experiences. And I think this referenced both to what Lilly and Henry were alluding to. It's this idea, you know, we don't just connect to our passions in service of ourselves, but looking for ways in which we can be of service to the broader needs within the community. And that's an amazing evolution and something that I think is really exceptional. And that's what supports the scholarship and the rigor and the conversations that occur in the classes. So it's a very powerful force within the academy currently.
So in order to do all of this work, going back to the RYE commitment and even the academy mission is our dedication to professional learning for ourselves, for our teachers, and for our students. And so with the help of Dr. Murray and our team here, we are really fortunate in our instructional coaches to really build a lot of professional learning and opportunities into all of our sessions. So we will meet with the academy team every other Wednesday to do some professional learning. We have opportunities to meet with our coaches and even an outside consultant, Diane Cunningham, that has been so powerful in all of our learning around research. So what we've done for, in the academy, and then I'll go a little bit broader to the district and what's happening there is, as Dr. Meyer said, over the summer, we had a retreat. And so not was that only for our students, but also Diane Cunningham came in for us to really build an understanding and learning and system and process around research. And so as you heard, all the things that are happening in our research class really were the unfolds and the unpacking of the work that we've been doing with Diane. So since August, we've had three sessions with her with our teams. We were fortunate to have morning sessions with her. So teachers were working with us for about probably two, two and a half hours a session to really kind of unpack what research looks like for us. So some of the sessions that we engaged in were not only looking at research, but tying it to critical thinking, since that's our focus for the year, really looking at ways that we can build strategies for designing research questions and coming up with our goals, to learning how to critically evaluate sources that students are looking at. We have such a variety of sources between the media, between articles that are out there. So how do we really evaluate what we're using and looking at? How do we design really authentic research questions that are open-ended? That A, students are passionate about discovering, but that also really fit to a need of the math and the science that they're learning in these different courses. So Diane has been instrumental for us in terms of helping us streamline our process and that our junior teachers are carrying out this process. It's carrying up to, as you can, from her, from Ms. Blanch, our senior program. And so there's a common language that students are learning around research, around how to design a literature review. So it's just been really helping that they're seeing consistency in language throughout the two years. And so that's been really powerful for us. Working with our coaches inside, so with Nick Claire and Carolyn Del Giugis, they've been amazing in terms of really unpacking and designing what you'll see up there, like our RYE resources for using the space. And so how do we look at it from an instructional lens, a technology lens, and then just a space and design? And so they've been instrumental with our teachers to build in not only individual models for them to, you know, to peruse on their own, but also holding like mini sessions and work sessions on our Wednesdays to unpack how to use the space. And just little things every day, it's like little nuggets. Did you know that you could flip this table, turn it into a group, and have like a great quick formative assessment check-in with students? And so we've designed a whole workbook for them. And as we grow these strategies together, we've been building them out. Not only has this caught on within the RYE Academy, but now we're using this to actually unpack and unfold other courses throughout the district. So yesterday, I had the opportunity with the support of Suzanne and Bill is to work with other teachers outside of the academy. And we held our first district learning walk. So now that we are so fortunate that we're building out spaces across the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school, we took four teachers yesterday to all of our buildings. We got to look to see how elementary students from kindergarten through fifth grade are utilizing it, how middle school students utilize these types of spaces, and really think about in their own learning and their own teaching and designing, what could their spaces look like moving forward? And what do they need to start shifting some of the thinking? And so it was really powerful because we've usually in the past have to go, we'd go out of district for that type of professional learning. But now that we've been growing at such an awesome rate, our classrooms, our design inquiry of learning, they're learning from each other. So it was just a great opportunity. And it was awesome to hear from one teacher who said, I actually haven't been to one of the elementary schools before. Like I hadn't seen this. And so just hearing conversations across was great.
Those are not teachers that are new to us. Though you had veteran teachers.
No, they've been here for 20-plus years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's been awesome. So we're really excited about what's working. We also just launched today at 3:30, one of our in-service classes that's running. So Nick Claire, Carolyn, and myself are running a redesigning learning environment space that's often open to K-12. So we have 10 educators in this course, again, spanning from elementary, middle, and high school. And it's to really unpack that thinking of design space and curriculum. So we're really excited for this work. It's a winter's course. But now we're kind of really gearing back up to where we were two years ago with this conversation of space design and, you know, rethinking what our classrooms could look like.
And I think the cool thing about it is that it's kind of hitting the point now that we've always wanted it to be, where it's coming through conversations that are happening between people. So there is a teacher from the academy taking Caitlin's course with Nick and Carol. So like, and it's through word of mouth that things are starting to spread, which we all know is really the most effective way for that to happen. Instead of it being necessarily top-down offerings, it's coming from them now, which is a good thing.
So very briefly, next steps. Take over the high school in the district. No, I'm just kidding. So one of the big-
He means the students.
It's true, as you saw today. And the sound, literally and figuratively. So we're gonna, one of the pieces that we're doing this year is actually a redesign of the sustainability course in 11th grade, both to be in a better alignment with the action research course that students get into in 12th grade, but also to address two needs we've seen emerged with some of our incoming cohorts, which is a desire to have pre-calculus in physics to set them up as they go into their 12th grade year. And also, I think we've seen this sort of in the expectations of colleges and admissions and sort of the students that we're bringing into the cohort. So that's a big shift, but also one we're really excited about. And I think the blend of these two courses could not be paired and married better. The other piece which we mentioned before-
Can I jump in for a sec?
Sure.
One of the other things is when we talk to the science teachers, obviously, pre-calculus, that is more of a foundational building block. But the physics addition is also because when you look at a trajectory of students studying sciences in the high school, you want your biology and chemistry. And we want students doing applicable science in the academy. And by being in there, the current program that we have, it explores the UN sustainability goals, which is unbelievable for advocacy and things like that. So we're making sure we have coursework where that is available still. But they were missing a physics component in terms of having a well-rounded science background for our most serious science students.
Thank you, yeah, exactly. In terms of the wellness piece, continue to build out the thematic units. This January, they're looking at purpose and authenticity, exploring humility, empathy, and compassion in February. There's a reflective component in March. But then probably the culmination of their work is their capstone presentations, which are essentially TED Talks that each of the seniors give to the whole cohort. And I think this is like an incredible opportunity and also a leverage point for the high school in general. When we think about senior slump, you know, it's this incredible waste of opportunity when you would expect students finally to have the space and the opportunity to delve deeply into something are often left unmotivated and disengaged. And we find the capstone as a way to sort of speak to the culmination of their growth, both within the academy, but also doing that across their high school career. The portfolio project is a piece that we have the juniors complete. It's almost like a gateway project to sort of see both where the seniors have gone, but also take inventory of where they are at as they move into their senior year. So both of these were very powerful last year. And we're so excited to expand on them. And of course, May 11th is our symposium where we'll be highlighting all of the senior research projects. We're going to continue building on the professional learning, research, and inquiry. We actually have a partnership with Deloitte Forming that came out of one of our info sessions from the fall, and they'll be in tomorrow. Meeting and engaging with our students, our 12th graders and 11th graders in terms of their work, we're really excited about that. And most of all, just seeing what we can be in terms of a model, both on the third floor, but for the whole school in regards to the space, the furniture, and the finalization of the whole process. So it's amazing what's occurred over the last 12 months. And I look forward to seeing what comes out of the next 12. So thank you so much. If you have any questions, please direct those to Henry or Lilly. And we will watch the responses in awe.
Do you realize you're skipping the entire undergraduate part of college and going right to masters and PhD work?
And I will say, maybe Henry and Lilly and Ms. Blanch, you can come up to the microphone because I have a feeling you're going to want to interject here.
The two people, as far as I'm concerned, who need the most praise and accolades are Lilly and Henry. The concepts and the things you're thinking about and talking about as seniors in high school is a place that I could have never envisioned myself as a senior in high school doing. There are moments where I'm not sure I could speak as eloquently, Henry, as you did about oysters and sounds and filtration. It's amazing and it's so exciting to see two students who are genuinely engaged in authentic learning that is clearly exciting to you both. And there's nothing that makes me more excited than seeing people excited about learning. So with that, I will pass it to the rest of the board and circle back.
I'm gonna go on, it sounded like a joke, but I wasn't kidding at all. You are on the front edge of the areas that you're looking at. You are exploring areas of knowledge that other people haven't done yet. And that's what a doctorate is. If someone has proven that they've moved the body of knowledge forward and/or a master's is taking it to that very deep level. And you're there, and it's amazing. It's absolutely incredible that you're talking about things that are on the cutting edge. And I could not be more excited for you and for the program as we move this stuff forward. It's amazing. And I was sitting here thinking back to 1989, which was really just yesterday. And as a senior in high school going, what the hell was I doing? No, I wasn't doing any of this. So this is great, congratulations to everybody.
I can't not say fantastic presentation from everybody. It's always, you know, we have the wonderful video that Dr. Byrne put together in collaboration with, you know, some of the people at the table here. And I actually was not here at this presentation last year. It was one of the meetings I had to miss last year. So this was just really great to hear this and participate in it personally. And I think just seeing sort of the passion and the excitement that came out of, you know, these seniors, that's just, it really is, it's so unique and it doesn't need to be. So as excited as I am to see you here and hear you, I'm also equally excited at how this program is growing, like the, just the color you're giving on how either, you know, teachers are listening and hearing this and seeing, you know, these students come in from on the second half of their day into their classrooms and they see the excitement and the, you know, kind of the energy that they're bringing. And so maybe bringing an openness to think about different learning spaces. Because that is, you know, some of these concepts are difficult for teachers who are very successful and have had, you know, really strong, wonderful careers and have a way that they do things, which is a wonderful way. But it's so great to open people's minds through this sort of small group. So thank you to everybody who's participating. It is really, really exciting. I did have one quick question on the number of kids. I know you said last year you had to actually, some of the applications, I don't know if that was the first year, you said you had to kind of take kids who applied and they didn't get in. But just what is the sense of how many juniors and seniors do get to participate in the academy?
So I'm gonna let them answer that. But I think there's a couple of things to also look at in terms of the numbers of people who have come to the question and answer sessions this year. And they'll have the more specific numbers because it's certainly higher than anything that we've seen. But currently, there are, what?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. So we're about 30 upstairs total.
Juniors.
And then, did you want to, you have the numbers for the question and answer sessions?
Yeah, so we ran several, I jump in, sorry. Several information sessions this year. We definitely started the process way earlier than last year, which was some feedback that we got, which was great. Just letting people sit with the concept of the academy, marinate it with families, with counselors, so to really kind of think about if this is the right fit for themselves and for the families. So we had several student information sessions during community lunch, where we're really well-received. I think each session, we had about 25 students participate, which is great. And then our night sessions, we ranged about 40-
Probably about 75 total.
In total, for each of the sessions that we did. One of the great opportunities we had this year, since the space was done, was not only did we have an information sessions, but we also got to do our own learning walk with families to really look at the space and talk through it. Because it's one thing to have the conversation, but to actually be in that environment, having it is a totally different note and really allow them to experience and see what would happen upstairs. So that was really a process.
Talk about the change in the application process?
Yeah, do you want to do it?
Sure. So we moved the application process up, and that was intentional in order to give both students an opportunity to have their decisions before they go in to choose their courses and also have space after the decisions are made to decide whether or not it's appropriate. So creating a welcome day in February. Hopefully, the decisions will come out in early February. But one of the other pieces we did is we changed the application process, where in the past, it was traditionally just text-based. And we didn't realize that, you know, AI models will potentially replace the essay. So we were ahead of the game there. And we opened this up for students to submit responses to any of the four questions in whatever format they so choose. I've already received some incredible applications that are far more creative than I think I would have imagined. Not to say that if someone wanted to submit by text, that is totally fine. I'm a big fan of the written word. And so we tried to offer more modalities of representation, allowing students to sort of showcase their talents in more unique ways, moving up the whole process, literally almost like a month and a half. And also, I think, just the recruitment and trying to get buzz and get people excited about the program. I think this is a very important cohort. It feels like, you know, it's a weird analogy, but like college football recruiting or something, you know? We want to have a great class. But I think the work of these students is probably the greatest sort of poster and representation of what the academy is about. And I think as that continues, we'll continue to see it grow in really incredible ways. So I can't thank the two of you and the teachers, Ms. Blanch, for what they do and how they create such a magical space.
I think just to like, give a concrete answer to, like, we definitely have been trying to find the right groove. And I think we finally found it in terms of how to appeal to all types of learners and all types of situations and find all types of interest for students. Building out our math program allows us to really round out the types of content interests students have. My projection is I expect that, so we generally have had about twice as many applications as seats. But I think because of where we were in the process, the kids were coming, and you guys would be able to speak to this, but they were coming up with decisions and course selection at the same time. And so now they'll come up with a decision before course selection. So it gives them a chance to really think about this in isolation and commit. So I expect it to be higher. We wouldn't take students who couldn't fit in there. But I do expect applications to be higher. be higher this year, just based on question and answer sessions, the people who have followed up with us in writing or through other questions, and even some of the kids who have been asking students upstairs questions.
But this is the max size for that? Like, the 15 per cohort is?
I think we have a little flex room, so I think that we can expand with the space being finished now, whereas in the library, it was a little more challenging. So we have a little bit more space and a little bit more room where we can program appropriate students in there. And then I think that's probably one of our next steps, questions that we need to look at, if we want to build out additional pathways of different content areas, or if we want to see if there's a way that we want to expand this work into something else.
Susan, just for context, how many juniors and seniors do we have?
Yeah, so there are 16 juniors, I think, and I think we are at 12 seniors because we.
Sorry, I meant total enrollment.
Twenty.
So how many seniors and 12th?
Oh, in the school.
Gotcha.
I'm with you now, girl.
I'm looking to try to figure out a percent type by senior.
Sixteen. Okay, I'm with you. About 235 in the senior class, and I'd have to look at the junior class. I can only start to pay attention to graduation. But around the same. The classes are about the same right now across the high school for the first time in a while.
I am curious how you guys are using the afternoon schedules for what are you putting in there and what are other students doing? Because I know that when people are thinking about it, when students are thinking about it, that that challenge of things they want to do elsewise and just having to force that in the afternoon, I'm just curious about these.
This year and last year or just this year?
Just in general.
Well, right now, I'm taking AP Calculus, AP Spanish, and AP Language and Composition. And last year, I took AP Psychology, Pre-Calculus, and Spanish, and I also self-studied for AP Environmental Science.
Thanks.
I'm taking digital music, too, band, Chinese, and AP US History.
Great, thank you. Not busy at all.
Right, but for Henry being in those music classes isn't busy, it's like enjoyable.
I just wanted to go back, I just wanted to go back to Kelsey and tag team, or tag along to what she was saying. I'm a 10th grade parent, so I attended the info sessions, and I wanted to give some positive feedback that the information got out. I had so many parents stopping me places, saying, what is this academy about? And going to the information sessions, the enthusiasm I saw from the parents, I think I can only imagine that the application numbers are going to be high because you could just see parents' faces like, oh my gosh, this is in our school. Our children can have this experience here at Rye High School. It was pretty neat to see. So I was going to ask a little bit about expansion plans and if you've thought about that, because I think that's potentially something we should address, because I think those numbers are going to be high. And also how we can, you talked about the district walks or district walks, but how we can also engage the larger community at Rye High School. I know in the afternoon, those classrooms are used by traditional classes, which I think is wonderful, but how we can educate the teachers and the students to use those rooms, I think, more efficiently, because I think they might not be using them as well as they could be.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of things with that. And actually, we were just talking about an excellence team today. So I'm going to answer like your things in different pieces. I think that there is definitely some room for growth. What we would need support in, full disclosure, you guys know me, I don't really pull punches, is still working through some of the community impression about traditional quote-unquote, can't see me, learning, because there, when push comes to shove, some families still are afraid to take that risk. And it's not a risk, that's what we're learning. You know, these students, like, I know them better than anybody in the building, they're learning like nobody else. They're going to places post-graduation that are the right places for them ultimately. So overcoming that piece, I think, is probably the one push and pull, but it's shifting because people are seeing things like this. Like, I don't even know if I actually understood some of the things that either one of them were saying. Like, they're learning the content. It's real, it's happening, and it's deep. And I think the more that people see that, the more helpful it is, which kind of plays into, I do think that we need to do a better job of showcasing them, now that they're getting more comfortable as a cohort with speaking, to the rest of the building, to our teachers, to our students. And we had been a little protective of them for a while to make sure that they're at a place where they're ready. They're ready. And so, you know, there was still that fear around it, but that fear is gone now. Like, we have a great admin team, we have a great teacher team, and we have the most amazing kids. So I think starting to turnkey some of that. We are using this model for the classroom redesigns in the high school. The parents' organization is being so generous in their funding of classrooms for us, and we're using the same model and the same information and the same learning that we've gotten from upstairs to go through that training. The blocks that Caitlin did with them yesterday in the district were from the PO donations, using this process to do an educational cycle for selection of furniture in our mainstream classrooms. So we are starting to take some of those things and turnkey them out, but I, you know, there's definitely room for us to have some more meaningful conversations about long-term and professional development, turnkeying, what does that look like? But just like we protected our students, I want to make sure we're protecting our teachers so that when they're ready to do that work, we use it. And I think they're getting to that place, but most of these courses, they've only taught once or twice. But I think we're there.
And I would like to just build on that one point. When we think about, this is a great option for kids. It's a great pathway for kids and families to examine, to learn about, and to potentially select for their students, like Lilly and Henry's families, and they did. We have been working as a system to create multiple pathways, and we've talked about that a lot at this table, is creating options for kids so that there isn't only one way to do it here at Rye High School, which is what we heard. We heard that loud and clear that there was only one way forward at Rye High School. And as a system, and I think post-COVID, some of the projects that we started exploring will be able to actually do now because we can go visit that school in Pennsylvania that couldn't host us, that is the only place that Suzanne found where there was a self-contained IB program within a larger school.
There is that.
Right, within a larger school. In most places, the entire school is an IB school. What we wanted to find, and Suzanne found it, was an IB academy model that existed within a school where there were other pathways. So as a system, that's the direction we're heading in, and we've talked about, we have our pathways for our students that in need of life skills programming, and that's here now. The academy, and if you think back, for those of you that know much about the Rye School of Leadership, which served an incredible, an incredible run of service in this community for so many families and kids, by the last couple of years of its existence, it wasn't really serving very many Rye kids, and that was something we were looking at. We were taking kids from other districts to sustain the program. And the whole notion of the academy was to create an option for kids in Rye. Clearly, we're hitting the mark there, because now if we're looking at, you know, many more applications than seats, that's a good problem to have. It's not a good problem if you're not getting one of those seats and you want it, but as a system, it tells us the notion of multiple pathways across our school for kids and families to be considering, we're on the right track, and that's where we're heading.
Engineering, too, just throw that out there.
I'm glad you mentioned that, though, because I think that is something that we, as a district, need to keep in mind. Well, yes, there are parents who are excited about it. Not all students are best suited to learn in this way. It is a specific type of learner that will succeed in an academy. Not all students are academy-type students, and what I did hear, which I was really happy to hear, and I'm fairly confident it continues to evolve, is this idea that we're going to look at some of the best practices that really are the things that kind of jazz kids, sometimes doing that research or finding, having that independent study, but within a more typical or more, as what we think of a traditional experience for a high school student, and trying to make sure that we don't over-subscribe a program because it is so exciting and it is so good for certain kids at then the, I don't want to use that word, at the, without providing an opportunity for other kids to also experience some of the best parts of the instructional program, but in a more traditional context where they feel to be the best learner. Because the original leadership program, and I think that would be a follow-up question, and I certainly, is those, that original program, does that now, how do we think about this new program meeting the needs of the original program? And are there kids who wouldn't now, who were, who wouldn't now, but we need to figure out where do they, how and where do they fit?
Right.
I think that some of that work is some of the stuff that we're doing with some of our curriculum documents. There's two things that I'm thinking when you're talking, because it always gives me ideas, that's why I enjoy this, which I think means there's something wrong with me. But like, when you're talking about the, making sure those best opportunities are there, the cool thing for me about the way that the academy would function is that there would be, some of these ideas we're hoping do catch on more, and they're starting to, in our, in our more traditional classrooms, right, in our 55-minute course session. However, this kind of program requires a passion point and a dedication that I don't think that we can expect from 235 kids in a grade. And so I think that there is a separate location for that, even when you bring some of the best learning out. The cool thing about this, though, is that the teachers get the chance to go back each year with the kids, create a new course, and then figure out also, what else can we keep pushing and learning into our buildings? It's like a little Petri dish, kind of, which I like, though, because the hope is that the academy is something that's always changing, so that we can find the best practices, leave behind the ones that aren't going to work. Caitlin said it before, or maybe Bill said it, but about like being willing, or maybe it was Bill, to take risks. And if that becomes a safe place to do that, it helps push instruction with everything. In terms of students and finding a place for them, I think that's some of the curriculum work we're continuing to do with Tricia, and making sure that as we look at students, even starting in 7th grade and the coursework that they're taking, that it's appropriately leveled for them, because everything says that if they're not confident in their content, that's when you lose them. So that to try to both decrease the number of students who feel like they don't belong in any sort of classroom, earrings are falling out, we're all good, and also to make sure that we are, once they are in high school, if they're still struggling with that content, making sure that we're providing all the opportunities for them. So I don't know if I'm answering your question.
Well, I think there's an additional piece to add to the conversation, because we've looked internally with what we're offering, we're looking internally at what we're missing and what we would like to offer, and we've also been looking externally to what's available to us that we may not have tapped into in the past. So I'm not sure the exact number, you guys over there will probably know this, but we have more kids attending the Career Program at Bosse's than ever before.
The rounds.
And that is a strikingly large number of kids for Rye, when I think we had one kid for a long time. That's a really important option, that's a pathway that's available to us without having to create something internally. So kids are here and at the CTE program at the campus in Valhalla.
And it's an increasing, increasing number of general education students. So we're no longer seeing those as positions for students who cannot, quote, be successful in school. They have passions in the things that they're studying.
So the short answer is, I think, for the most part, we are meeting the needs of the students that would have typically looked to the Rye School of Leadership, either internally, externally, or some combination of the two.
And I'm not usually a person who would do this, but I would be remiss not to like thank Gabby for some of that, too, though, because no matter what, when we're finding programs for these students, they're not always inexpensive, and some of these things that we ask for are not always realistic, and she manages to make it happen. So the conversations that we have in these rooms in terms of like what our students need, we're finding them, we're identifying, and we're meeting their needs, but I'm grateful that she makes that work for us.
But I think that speaks to the larger idea about systems and how important thinking and knowing and being part of a larger system with a shared common value and understanding and commitment to all, that it only happens when the business office understands what the instructional programming is doing, which the special ed program is supporting in the human resource staff development, that it has to work that way for it to work for our students. And so the fact that everybody is committed, it just, it's really exciting to see. It bodes well for all of the future developments of all of the pathways, and this wonderful opportunity that you two are representative of is a great experience for all in our community, and I don't think we could be more proud of the work all of you are doing. So we thank you. Kelsey, do you have another question?
No, I was just going to circle back, I know Callie mentioned it, and I don't think we got back to it, was the idea of the space in the afternoon and just ensuring that that, it sounds like there is professional development and encouragement for the general education to utilize that space, but just making sure that the training remains there and that people, that that excitement can be spread and really get that space used, because it is such a fantastic space. It sounds like it's happening.
Well, and based on the advice of the students, I'm very fortunate, I have a great group of kids who work with me for Excellence Team, and they pretty much all but suggested that we potentially move some people out from upstairs and offer other people a chance to go up there, and that's what we're doing. So we're making sure that when people are ready, that the training and stuff is there. There may or may not be some people who sometimes just show up there and like before classes start and move furniture around, and you'll find that people who are resistant, sometimes they'll just let kids sit there, and then when it works, it's great. So sometimes the changes are enthusiastic and excited, and sometimes they're a little hesitant, but they're happening with everybody. Even the people who really didn't love it at first are starting to really engage with it. Sometimes if you force a little and love, it works.
And the other piece that's really important in the equation is that students are learning in spaces that look a lot more like the third floor from their very first days in elementary school now. So you're not having, you're not putting students into a space that they're unfamiliar with. It's backwards. So when you've had an experience, and I know in many of our elementary schools have redesigned classrooms, our libraries, our auditoriums, I mean, there's a lot of different kind of spaces at the elementary schools, and now finishing up in the middle school, and I know the middle school has a number of classrooms they're redoing as well, the kids start to drive the change for the teachers. So while it may be a little uncomfortable for a teacher to make that shift, if the kids are sort of asking for it, demanding it, showing they're ready for it, because I think one of the hesitations is teachers will sometimes default to, well, the kids aren't going to focus, they're not going to pay attention, they won't be engaged. But when the kids have grown up with that, that focus engagement piece never comes in, it never becomes a problem, you know, because they're comfortable from the beginning.
One of the best things yesterday in the learning walk was teachers talking to students, and, you know, we're driving in the car, and like those mushroom stools, like, that's an ab workout, like, no kid can pay attention in there. And when we got into the 5th grade classroom, or the kindergarten, or the 4th grade, and it was like, ask, just go tap them on the shoulder and say like, what's their favorite part in the room to learn? And it was like, I love this stool because, or I prefer this chair because it does not move, or like, just the choice, and for them to be able to verbalize where they can do their best learning and be the best selves was awesome for the teachers to hear. Because sometimes we have these preconceived notions of what will work well, and based on every classroom, the feedback was really different. So that was one of the things in our professional learning and our in-service classes during these learning walks, it's not only what we're thinking, but they're going back and getting feedback from their students.
And it's, that was probably the most impactful part of my own research and doing my doctoral studies, was talking to kids about the different options, because I imagine if, and feel free to weigh in, Lilly and Henry, that having the ability to choose the kind of chair you're sitting in, while we might not think that that's impactful, for a student who may be sitting in the same chair that they've been sitting in since kindergarten, just a larger size of it, it's potentially really impactful.
I actually use a standing desk every day.
Someone at this table uses a standing desk every day, too. So.
I have a lot of energy.
I have a chair tied on all of them.
Yeah. I just want to, you know, a couple of years ago, I said to Caitlin, while we were in the midst of some, a large number of leadership transitions, I said, Caitlin, I need you to take this project on and help steward the third floor project and the development of the the, and the development of the academy. And Kaitlyn hadn't been a high school teacher before, but really threw herself into this work, so Kaitlyn and Bill and Suzanne as well, but, but Kaitlyn, you, you stretched yourself and, and put yourself out there, and that, that is really appreciated. So thank you for your leadership in this work.
One thing I just want to mention quick, because we forgot to say during advisory, but with, this is a, a program within a school, a school within a school, and the academy students are also having the opportunity to work with our Garnet students come February, so just to showcase not only partnerships outside of the district, but in the district, and really building those opportunities. So I just really wanted to mention that, because it's going to be a great opportunity for them and for our students, we're really looking forward to that. So we want to make sure that everyone's being collaborative and working together. So thanks, everyone, for your work on that.
All right. Well, this is amazing. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we will move on to our time for the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. I will ask our district clerk to set a timer for three minutes, so if you hear the timer, please wrap it up. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, so please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending Seeing no one here from the public to speak, we will move on to our consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Chris Repetto, seconded by Kelsey Johnson. We will review our consent agenda, one section at a time. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal construction. Kelsey?
Gabby, it'd be very helpful if you could walk through the change orders that are on the agenda tonight.
Yep. My apologies, I'm just texting Luigi, trying to figure out why we keep getting hot and cold flashes in here. So you will see two change orders on the agenda tonight related to the Osborne Phase Two construction projects. One is for Neighbor Electric. It is a change order, approximately $33,000 related to overtime charges that were incurred as a result of a delay that was created by one of the other contractors on the job site, which relates to change order number two, which is an ICOM change order for a credit amount of 400, I believe it's 475,000, credit meaning funds coming back to the district, reducing their overall contract amount. Part of it is, or a small piece of the 475,000, is the 33,000 of the previous change order, because it was a delay related to that contractor that caused the other contractor to incur additional charges. In addition to a bunch of other items related to contract work that was either not completed appropriately or completed at all, so that the district has the funds needed to then get the items outstanding completed by other contractors that we will continue to work with. So it's a give and a take, if you will.
And so that, the credit, the work, there's some credits to reimburse overtime or issues from ICOM, but the majority of the credit is work that has yet to be done, that will be done by another contractor.
So some of-
Or billed by another contractor.
Correct. Some of the work has already been corrected, and this is our means of getting paid back for funding that the district had to outlay to other contractors to keep the process going. So this is us getting paid back for that. Some of it is paying us back for monies that we have to pay, like a neighbor for overtime that we had to incur, because their contract allows for that, in terms of delay claim and, and damages. So does that kind of answer?
And so I guess my, the question I'm trying to understand with this credit is, have all the other costs come in? Did they, did they come in as a change order because we changed the, the vendor? So if, if ICOM, so some of these were over, like the overtime, they reimbursed.
Correct.
But if there was a piece of the project that they didn't-
Didn't complete.
-ever complete.
Mm-hmm.
Do, are those still outstanding, and we are going to pay for those in the future, or have those already come through as a charge?
It's a, it's a, all of them are accounted for?
Yes.
But they are not all expended?
But they would come through as change orders?
No.
No, because?
Because it's not a, it's not, it, it's a change order to ICOM because they're giving us the money back, but when we have to contract with the next contractor, that's not ICOM, there's no method of a change order that the board would see.
Mm-hmm. So for just our general log that we're thinking about, this credit, the work that's going to be done will not offset this, so this is, it's kind of like an imbalance to the log, because it's-
Well, the log can, change orders can only apply to the contractors in which we've contracted for, right? But then, so, and that's Contractor A, because I, I don't really want to use names, so it doesn't really matter.
Yes.
Okay. So Contractor A, we said we were going to pay you a million dollars. You're giving me back 475,000 of that million, because now I have to go spend it with Contractor B.
Yeah.
So I'm going to then engage in a contract with Contractor B. So it doesn't translate into another change order.
Right.
Right?
Yes. And so, though, the, the change order log that we are, I just want to make sure I'm reviewing that correctly.
Mm-hmm.
This number, the credit, I don't know how to explain this. The work is going to be done by somebody else, and this credit is kind of deflating the, the long-term change orders, because it's, the change order is just that we're changing contractors. That's the change.
But there isn't, it's not a zero balance on both sides of the ledger when it comes to change orders. So it doesn't have to match up, because the work is going to be done by another contractor that's not yet been identified.
Right.
It won't exist as a change.
Right. So the whole, the full picture, I guess, I, yes, okay.
So I guess you have to look at the change order log specific to the individual contractor compared to the original contract amount.
Right.
Does that?
Yes.
Right?
Right. Okay.
But it doesn't tell the other side of the balance sheet. You're, you're not wrong in what you're asking.
Right.
Right? So it's still going to cost the million dollars.
Right.
But you're going to see it expended in another location.
Yes. That is not reflected on the change order log that we're tracking.
Correct. Because the change order log is one-sided, if you will.
Right. Okay. Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. And then the, would you say, my only other question on this, is the bulk of the work that we are moving to Contractor B, has that been done? Because, so this contract was signed however many years ago, negotiated, and we're moving some of it to new contractors, and we're now exposed to kind of new pricing, so is the magnitude of that piece of the work due to this contractor not, do you have a sense, the 475, I understand there's pieces of it that we've already spent, such like the 33,000 change order, but I guess I'm trying to get a sense of?
Is it costing more money?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and the, but at the, the 475 is not the amount of work that we're rebidding.
You're not rebidding?
Or moving to Contractor B.
Correct.
How mu, what is the magnitude of work that we are moving to Contractor B that's not something like the 33,000 that we're paying due to delays caused by Contractor A? Like, what is our exposure of higher costs? Is it half of this amount? I guess is what I'm trying to understand.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at, I'd have to dissect-
Because it's a big number.
Yeah, it is.
So I'm just trying to get a sense of the impact.
I'd have to go back and look at, there's, there's a lot of different moving parts that's related to that.
That one.
So I'd have to come back with a more detailed response.
And I don't need, I guess, just directionally, just to get a sense of the magnitude of the impact of this for figuring out.
Well, you're right. I mean, the reality is, we awarded these contractors, you know, in the midst of COVID, and, and much of this is related to doorwork that we've had difficulty to begin with, when we didn't think that there was a supply chain issue. So that item alone has, has created a, a much larger expense than what we thought we would have.
But we will be jumping into that a little further at the next board meeting, the next presentation on the capital project, is where we stand with everything.
You're welcome.
Consent agenda professional. Consent agenda classified. And consent agenda special education. All those in favor to approve the consent agenda? Six, nothing. We have one absent. So, on this evening's consent agenda, we have a, the RISE High School cheerleading fundraiser through SNAP was able to raise and has now donated $4,003.30 for supplies and expenses. The RISE High School field hockey team has been the beneficiary of an anonymous donation for field hockey goals. The RISE Fund for Education has been generous in awarding a $6,885 grant for the Tang math programs. And these are for students in our CATA V program, for them to have puzzles and word problems to be used doing our WIN period, which is to help support differentiation of all student learners during the classroom day. So we're excited about that. The RISE Garnets Ice Hockey Foundation has donated $29,797 to offset ice time for hockey for all three of our levels, so our modified, our JV, and our high school. It is clearly an expensive amount of time on the ice.
Ice is expensive.
Ice times expensive, well, that's why they play at four in the morning and 10 o'clock at night. And we have one retirement this evening. Jamie Zung is retiring effective July 1st. So, "It is with sadness that I announce the retirement of longtime RISE High School science teacher, Dr. Jamie Zung, as of July 1st. Dr. Zung has been with the RISE City School District for 29 years and has been a high school science teacher for 33. Dr. Zung came to the RISE City School District in 1994 as a science teacher at RISE High School. In his years at RISE High School, he has taught biology, AP environmental science, living environment, AP chemistry, honors chemistry, and in his very early years, grades nine and 10 science. For many years, Dr. Zung served as the president of the RISE Teachers Association and negotiated contract, contracts, and represented his colleagues while working with the school district administration. Dr. Zung gave freely of his time, both with students and colleagues. He was known to stay countless long hours after school to work with students needing extra help. He was an, an veteran volunteer, serving on the Strategic Planning Committee, the RISE High School Excellence Committee, and the RISE City School District Teacher of the Year Committee. He was a class advisor, science club advisor, and a new teacher mentor. He was a familiar and welcome sight at school shows and performances. He was known as RISE High School's resident opera star, participating in many musical performances throughout the years. Before coming to the RISE City School District, Dr. Zung taught science for three years at the William H. Taft High School in the Bronx. While in graduate school, he worked as a teaching assistant at Adelphi University, and as a graduate assistant, and as a teaching fellow, laboratory instructor, and an adjunct instructor at Fordham University. Dr. Zung has a BA from Hostia University, an MS from Adelphi, Adelphi University, and a PhD from Fordham University. He spent three years as a research associate and one year as a postdoctoral associate at the Laboratory of Parasitology at the Rockefeller University in New York City. RISE High School principal Suzanne Short said of him, "Jamie is one of those teachers who goes above and beyond every single day to make his students feel supported and capable. You can find him in the science building at all times of the day, building a passion and love in students, not just for chemistry, but for people as well. He has inspired students, faculty, and administration for years, and I have no doubt that while his presence will be missed, the lessons he has taught us will continue to endure." Dr. Eric Burns said of him, "Working with Dr. Zung has been an absolute pleasure. His commitment to students and the RISE City School District is unparalleled. I've never met a teacher who spends more time and longer hours helping students to achieve success. There have been many late nights with Dr. Zung, provided extra help to students as they prepared for AP and Regents exams. In addition, Dr. Zung often shares stories about former students and their successes in life, and I have always appreciated hearing those great examples of the power of public education. In his retirement letter, Dr. Zung said, 'Thank you for giving me the opportunity and academic freedom to share my passion for science with countless number of students during the past 29 years. It seems like only yesterday that I was called up to the front of the Performing Arts Center by Dr. Rooney to be introduced to the entire district. I've enjoyed and looked for, I have enjoyed and looked for, and look forward to every day in the classroom since then, wishing you and the district continued success. Dr. Zung, we wish you all the best in retirement.'" We will now move on to presentation and discussion number two with an athletics update.
Thanks. Good evening, and thank you for having me this evening. This is just a brief synopsis, if you will, of a review of the fall and winter. I will be back. Well, I thoroughly actually enjoy the budget presentation, because it does present a lot of facts, and that's something that I find very important as we navigate athletics and perception, of course. So, starting off, we had an excellent fall. I share participation numbers. Again, when we do our budget breakdown, you'll have a comprehensive over the last few years of those numbers, but you can see both in high school and middle school that we have a large number of student athletes participating. Almost half of our students participate in the fall in our sports offered. And the number that you'll see there is 423 out of the population of nine through 12, and then 211 out of the seventh and eighth grade, since modified consists of seventh and eighth grade. Recognition-wise, very proud that all our teams continue to set the bar high with our NISFA Scholar-Athlete Teams. Just to refresh your memory, that's a number, a specific percentage of a student roster of, per sport, must obtain a 90 or better average to, to meet that criteria, and that Donna spends a lot of time, I'm administrative assistant, on getting that information and submitting to the state, so, in a timely fashion. So again, that's what we're here for, is our student athletes excel, that's something we're very proud of. Our league champions this fall, we, girls soccer, boys soccer, field hockey, and field football, we're co-league champions with two other teams, Clarkstown South and Harrison. So obviously some great success as teams. As many of you are aware, the Heart of a Giant Award, TJ Neves, our ninth grade student, was a semifinalist. That was exciting to be all a part of that, and watch, you know, TJ flourish in a sport and continue, and it was nice to, to be able to, to recognize not just the program, but him specifically, and his everyday work with the football program. We experienced challenges, not just RISE, the entire section- We experienced challenges, not just Rye, the entire section, we've battled through this. Fall was tough, and many of our games that were scheduled to start at 5:00 PM started sometimes at 5:30 because schools could not get here in time. Many, many companies that are contracted through school districts have to do their runs first, and then they pick up athletics second. But second to that, school districts that have their own transportation were still experiencing these delays because of the same instances, also due to lack of drivers. So, all these companies and school districts have been attempting to obtain drivers, but obviously, there are still a number of people or a number of companies and school districts that lack this, so it has an effect across the board. And when that happens, that affects officials as well. But primarily, our lack of officials in the fall, unfortunately, our modified programs that need the officials, in my opinion, sometimes the most, because they're learning, often get rerouted, or we're told the day of, there's no official for your game. We are fortunate enough that we've had some of our physical education teachers step up and officiate so that we don't have to continually reschedule, because when you reschedule, it's a cyclical effect, transportation becomes an issue. So, the fall was tough, but we were able to get through, and we are very fortunate that we live in a community that parents and our neighbors support one another to get through this challenge. We're very fortunate. I know many of my colleagues don't have that same opportunity, but through our transportation release and our support of our families, we were able to, to get our kids to and from some of our events. In the winter, you can see our numbers are a little lower because obviously, there's not as many opportunities at the state level in the winter with our population. Right now, our success to date, we're entering the second half of the season, our, for example, in a boys' and girls' basketball program, varsity level, you can compete in a maximum number of 20 competitions in the regular season. We are approximately at 11. So, we're hitting the second half. And tonight, our girls' basketball team just beat Harrison, and our wrestling team beat Harrison for the first time in 37 years, which I did not know that fact. So, it was a pretty successful night, and we continue to look forward. Our teams are all doing some wonderful things. The girls' track and field team that came back, finding from the armory, of course, it's super late, they were ecstatic, and, and that was pretty interesting to, to hear and be a part of. Because, again, that's a team that I always feel for, our teams that participate off-site, when you don't have a home site, it's always, you know, difficult. So, I look at that and, and give them huge kudos. So, I can bet, when we do this update in the future, we'll have more to add. Challenges, again, we haven't had as many issues as in the fall, but we still, it's, you know, a week-to-week basis. I'm very fortunate, Donna Sorkin, my administrative assistant, works with county coach. She, tonight, when I left for the basketball game, was doing transportation for next week, and we confirm and solidify, and as things change, she updates. Some days, we'll find out the day of, others, we find out the day before, if we don't have a driver, and we shift. The winter, I believe, we've had two days where this has happened, and it wasn't due to lack of drivers, there were some issues with theft at county coach that created this issue, so it was just a freak thing. But with our smaller teams, it's, it's, again, our parents and our families kicked in and supported us, so we're very lucky. At the bottom, I just wanted to bring something to your attention. Gabby, if you could click on that school classification number, if you don't mind? I just want to share something, and I'll dive into this in the future some more. This is the New York State Public High School Athletic Association website. It's kind of, our, our handbook's on here, our programs are on here, but classifications is an important thing for people to understand. Some of our sports this year, we've been Class A for most things, and if you look down and go deeper on individual sports, we are usually Division One in some programs and Division Two in others. It's based upon the beds numbers. So, beds day is reported to the state, and it's the ninth and 10th grade beds numbers, and the average of the two combined that come up with our beds numbers. So, our beds numbers for next year, 2023 and 24, is 654. So, again, it's the average of ninth and 10th grade, and then ninth and 10th grade separate. Now, traditionally, we've been an A school for quite a while in what we would call the five-sport classifications, which Gabby sees there, the team sports. Next year, in a sport, for example, like football, you may have heard, we are dropping to Class B. It has nothing to do with our abilities, it has everything to do with these numbers. The cutoff numbers are decided by the state committees and voted on by our executive committee. So, each year, this is done with the beds numbers changing each year, but the cutoff points also changing. So, one thing that's not been updated, because we're not there yet, and this is where I will come back to you in the spring with an update on this, is we were fortunate enough, our executive director, Robert Zayas, recognized that as a state, we have one of the largest state participation numbers. However, we have smaller, or rather, fewer state championship opportunities. With having the double A through D, you can see that that offers, in a traditional sport select soccer, five opportunities for a state championship. And if you look at the double A, 965 and up, that can mean a, a school that's, say, 1,006 to 3,000 in beds numbers, where that's an extreme difference. So, our six-sport classification sports, which are boys soccer, girls soccer, baseball, softball, basketball, both boys and girls, will have a triple A now. So, triple A, double A, A, B, C, and D. And again, it's not on here because it's not relevant, it was just passed in November 1st. So, I'll give you a great example of an effect on this, is in boys soccer and girls soccer, we will remain in A, and a sport, our team next to us, our neighbor Harrison, will be a double A. So, they will be in a different league, they will be in a different playoff structure, we will still compete with them because we will have opportunities to pick up games. My colleague, Chris Galano, emailed many of us that we traditionally play and said, "Don't forget to save a game for us," because tomorrow, in our AD's meeting, we're actually scheduling for fall, based upon some of this criteria. So, it's a lot to throw at you right now, but I just bring it up because in the spring, as I progress, I will update you on this. But this is, most importantly, to understand how the number comes about, because many times, people will think, "Oh, why are we B? Did we do something wrong? Is it based upon ability?" And it's clearly not, it's based upon a number. Beds, yep, that's on our, on the, on the day where we do our student attendance, and it's reported to the state.
This will be good to see if Brian knows what the letters stand for.
Oh, I, I, you know what?
It comes out of his arm, you know? This is right up the Brian Arm Alley.
Okay, come on, geek it out.
Basic Educational Data Services?
Yeah. Caitlin?
That, yay! Yeah.
It's essentially your, your.
Enrollment.
Your enrollment numbers, that's all.
And it's a snap, for us.
Census.
Snapshot on one day.
But it's not just the clean, for the section, isn't it like an averaging of different grades and different years?
Correct. So, it's the ninth grade.
There's a lag.
The 10th grade, and then a division of the two, to get a three numbers that equal 654.
And it's that moment in time?
Yes.
That we use for everything?
Correct.
So, when we talk about enrollment projections, we always compare to beds day. It is, that's, those are the numbers.
So, case in point, we're at 654 for next year, but in reality, when we start the school year, even if we use that cohort, it could be 100 more if we had students come in, but you don't change that.
It's early in October.
Right.
So, anything can happen after that, but it doesn't count because they still go back to beds day.
And each committee comes up with how they determine those cut points. So, serving on the state football committee as a Section 1 rep, we actually looked at the six-sport classification model philosophically. They take 100 schools and put them in triple A and 100, or, excuse me, it's 75 and triple A, 100 and D, and then double A, A, B, and C divide the rest. So, they try to balance out each area, if you will, and that's philosophically how they come up with that. So, I just wanted to highlight it because you may hear, "Why are we a B?", for example, in football, and "Why are we an A?", and everything else. That's because football is not listed as a five-sport class, or five-classification sport, it's separate, you'll see it down below. So, I just shared that with you, just more of an FYI, and, and again, in the spring, as we update, I'll explain a little bit more and, and where we're at.
I appreciate the classification, as I had already been asked by a few people about why it was and what had happened. And so, I think the most salient point you make is that it's not about the team, it is solely about enrollment in ninth and 10th grade at a specific date and time, at a specific minute, hour, and second.
Perfect, I love it.
Helping everybody to understand how exactly it doesn't make sense. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I think the only thing I would just ask, and it actually falls to the policy, is I know that we had looked at and talked about the policy related to appropriate placement of students.
Yes.
And that that was going to be something that the policy committee would review after you had an entire year, and I think that's probably coming up at the end of this season.
End of the season, yep.
Yes.
And I do, and I can share that data with the board as well, because I know I've shared it with the policy committee, of the numbers that have.
I have full faith in our policy chair that that information is going to get presented to the board in full time at, at its appropriate time and place.
And I, I do want to follow up on a piece on that because it's appropriate, because I know you're about to talk about policy, I believe, shortly.
We most certainly are.
So, we'd encourage anybody and our neighbors, because our local, our, excuse me, our policy committee has made some edits to our stadium light policy, and that letter did go out to our neighbors, so just FYI, as an update to our Board of Education. We're, we'll talk further about that, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that that did go out.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right, thank you so much. And what a wonderful segue.
Yes.
Straight into information and discussion, policies.
Yes, here we are.
What do we got, Jen?
So, so, we have several.
Yes.
So, on the agenda tonight for information and discussion, for review, and then hopefully we'll move again to the next meeting, are four different policies. The first is our annual election and budget vote. This policy, typically, most of it is actually handled within election law. So, majority of this information is part of the law. But the one area that is not, is the area of propositions. And so, as you're looking at this policy, you'll see it has the markup, and this is a slight system change. We used to have the line, a line through, like a strike through for things that were being deleted, but now it is color-coded, so the green is an addition and the red is a deletion. So.
I'm sorry, that's, for, for some of us learners, that's a, that is a stressful change.
It's been a challenge, but we're working on it.
Okay, thank you for telling me.
You're welcome.
I'll read it differently.
Always innovating at the policy committee.
I mean, you guys are really always ahead of the game.
Yes. So, what you'll see is, there's two areas up at the top that have been deleted because those are primarily, they fall under election law, there's, they're mandated regardless. But then down at the bottom, you'll see the area of propositions. We've updated some language to make it as clear as possible what would be required for a proposition to be submitted by either someone from the community or from the board itself. And these are reflecting the most current, you know, ideas around how that can be as clear as possible for anyone who wants to submit a proposition, as well as how we can manage it operationally, timing and things, you know, related to that, if somebody was going to submit something.
There are a couple of wonky things in, in board docs right now from a, a technical standpoint, so you may see some formatting things that look kind of funky. We put in a work ticket to, to get those corrected.
Okay.
So, the strikeouts are going to come back?
I'm not sure about the strikeouts, but.
No.
Okay, sorry.
I think we did ask.
I got excited.
Okay. Because I feel like it's.
As a learner, it's hard for me.
It is sometimes hard to decipher.
I appreciate that. Well, thank you.
So, you'll see, one of the, one specific change here was related to the number of signatures that were, were required if someone be, wanted to submit a proposition from the community, and we felt that it was probably most appropriate for it to match the amount of signatures that are required for someone to get on the ballot as well, because that's what this is, is being added to the ballot of a, of the budget.
Is that 100 kind of similar to what the 5% of the?
It would vary, because it would, it would depend on the number of votes that were.
But circa, I would imagine, it's, it's the same amount, or?
Again, it would vary, it depends. Sometimes it'd be higher, sometimes it'd be lower, which is why this kind of felt like a good, it had to be reasonable, it had to be a reasonable amount, that was what the law required.
Got it.
So, we felt that was reasonable, the reasonable amount for a candidate to get signatures was 100, it'd be reasonable for the same to be for a proposition.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? No? All right. Moving on to the next two I'll talk about, were actually results from our internal audit. So, the first one is 5250, which is the Student Activities Fund. And as, as an output of the internal audit, there was a recommendation to make this, make the instructions more specific around collection of funds, how they were being stored, how they were being deposited, how the deposits were being tracked, and all of that language has been updated within the policy here in green. And the next one is cellular telephones. Again, an output, a recommendation from our internal audit was to include the list of positions that would be required to have a cellular telephone from the district. And that's what's listed here also in green. And then the very last one was actually an outgrowth of the review of a totally separate policy, that we've already rescinded, but what we found in looking at this one more time was that there was language in here that reflected the board, the opportunity for the board to create an advisory committee related to facilities, which, in fact, we already have that committee, which is the Facilities Committee, in existence, and so it was a redundant piece of information, so we suggested deleting it.
That makes more sense now, that red is a deletion, not as.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Took care of my question.
No problem. So, these are here for your review. If anyone has any questions or other comments, you can send it to me before the next meeting. Otherwise, we will do our second review in two weeks.
Sounds great, thank you. Moving on to communications to and from the board, we will start with board and district committee updates. Since our last meeting, curriculum council met on December 7th. Do we have a board member to write an update?
I was not able to make that meeting, I was out of town.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next time.
No one else there?
Don't think so. Maybe Tom, he's not here. All right, policy committee, we just got that update. Do you have any further information to share?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of what we talked about was what's on the agenda tonight. We did review two other policies that did not have any changes to them, so they now just have a review date. Those are, that was Policy 6640, Asset Capitalization, and Policy 8140, Unsafe School Transfer. We also had discussion around our stadium light policy, which will be coming up further into the year as a, as another review for the board. We did just receive, like, the day after this meeting, or the day before, the NISBA installment of New York State School Boards Association installment of their updates that they either require or suggest. So, we are actually meeting tomorrow in policy, and we'll be reviewing all of those. We're also in the process of reviewing all of our special education policies to ensure that all of those are up to date, and so that, that's another item that will be on our agenda, mostly tomorrow or February, we'll, we'll get, we'll have to break them up a little bit, but, yeah, so that's essentially what we spent our time doing at the last meeting.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then the wellness committee?
The wellness committee did have a meeting, and we were, our, our charge of the meeting was to review, the triannual review of the wellness policy, which is required every three years, obviously. We took a, you know, a good look at the policy, and it was interesting that it was, was released in, three years ago, and then we went right into a pandemic. The, the committee. The, the committee talked a lot about the policy. We think the policy itself is in fine shape. What, the work that needs to be done now is really review of implementation, which didn't really happen through the pandemic. So, we've asked, you know, the administration to take a look at what procedures, practices around the district need to be reviewed in respect to what the policy lays out. That is, it can affect food in, you know, in the classrooms and social situations, as well as some oversight of the ARMR contract and the lunch programs. So, that, my understanding is that work is underway?
Okay, yeah, and I think another piece to that was actually that while the policy does need to be reviewed triannually, during the pandemic, the requirement, the federal requirement of reviewing that policy was actually eliminated because of the global pandemic. So, we did the review for the three years, even though the policy was not in effect during two and three quarters of the institution of the policy. So, but I did think it was interesting in that meeting, when we were, you know, it's like with all of these things, there's this time warp that happens where you forget what life was like three years ago, and we were talking about how, with the institution of that policy, there was a lot of effort that was being made initially, certainly in September and October, I remember with the new ARMR coming in and the introduction of new foods, and one of the things that they introduced was cauliflower pizza, which was in an attempt, as the policy states, to get kids to try to think about healthy choices, and that one wasn't met with the excitement at my house, and I don't think it was universally beloved because it didn't come back, but it was that idea that we talked about in the policy, that those are the kinds of efforts that were committed to initially and were, because of the world, we couldn't get into, but a recommitment to go ahead and get back to those kinds of things. So, I'm sure there will be another conversation and committee meeting to review kind of where we've gone from here.
Yep.
Great. Okay, so, we have future meetings. Policy meets tomorrow. Facility will meet next week. Technology on the 26th, and Curriculum Council, write this down, February 15th, Mr. Repetto.
I might be in town for that one.
If you're not, just let me know, we'll find us out. All right. Any other comments, communications to and from the board? No? Okay. We will have our next Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, January 24th, to talk about the Capitol Project. So, we look forward to that. We thank everyone for coming this evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Chris Repetto, followed by Vivek Kamal. Everyone in favor? That's 6-0. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.